Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 4th, 2021, meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We will call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum present tonight. Got everyone here, and I would like to say in those regards, just go off before we go on to the next item. One of our members, this will be her last meeting tonight, Ms. Jennifer Garland. And I'm very sad to report that. Jennifer has been a member of our commission for five, six, tell me how many years, Jennifer?
Six, seven.
Six, seven, yes. And just such a wonderful addition to our group, and so much to offer, and just, we are going to miss you terribly. We so appreciate your years of service to the city of Murfreesboro, and you will, you will be greatly missed. And we do look forward to your, the, the next appointee, but we will miss you very much. Just wanted to make sure we all know. So, our first item of business tonight will be to approve the minutes of the July 14th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Do you have any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, we have our public hearings for this evening. Five of them, I believe. We start out with a mandatory referral and right-of-way abandonment to consider abandonment of the rights-of-way of Florence Road. Terry Smith is the applicant. Ms. Green, good evening.
Good evening, thank you. Our first public hearing this evening is for you to consider both a mandatory referral and a right-of-way abandonment request our department has received for a portion of Florence Road right-of-way. And this area is identified in map on the screen that's before you. The portion of Florence Road right-of-way, which is requested to be abandoned, is in the former location of Florence Road. You may remember, the city rebuilt the segment of Florence Road, and I think it opened up in about 2008, and realigned a sharp curve that was in Florence Road further to the west. And so, you can see on the map the, a segment of right-of-way, and, and my next map will show you that there's actually no roadway within that right-of-way. I did conduct a study of the area, reached out to the various utilities to inquire if they had a need for the city to maintain that right-of-way. And it seems that, the, I provided you a memo, but it seemed that there was no reason to maintain this as right-of-way, but there will be a need to retain easements for the various utilities that are in the area. For example, there's some drainage facilities in the area, mostly in the form of a ditch. There's some water and sewer facilities and some electric facilities. That is not uncommon with old rights-of-way, which we study and looked to abandon. And so, it would be staff's recommendation that this be approved by the Planning Commission. We did reach out with the applicant, who is here tonight, Mr. Terry Smith is to my left, and his representative, Mr. Bill Huddleston's to my right, if you have any questions from them. And he is an heir of the property across Florence Road, where I've got a poorly drawn asterisk. And he's one of the heirs, and it, from our records, it appears that the right-of-way probably came from that property before Florence Road was constructed. This little bit of property as well, they're both part of the same parcel, and you can see that our Florence Road did dissect it. And sometimes, when we review these, we, we have a public hearing, which we're not required to have, and we send notices just so that we can let anybody who has contiguous property know about their request, and if they have some sort of interest, invite them to come to our public hearing, and of course, tell us what, what their interest is in the property. Reviewing the matter, it did make sense that this right-of-way be dedicated all to the Howard Smith Trust property, which are the, the parcel that was divided. Mr. Terry Smith is just one of the heirs, but they're all in agreement and have all requested this. If you have any questions, either from me or the applicant, they're here to answer your questions. Otherwise, I'd like for you to conduct a public hearing, and if you do recommend approval, we would like the approvals to be subject to the applicant's providing the city legal department. Any necessary documentation to prepare quick claim deed, and for the recording of quick claim deed, a plat depicting the abandonment and relocation of the subject property recorded, and utility easements must be dedicated as needed to accommodate the existing facilities in the area. These are the same conditions we put on all right-of-way abandonment requests, so it would be consistent with our pri, our previous actions as well.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Green. Does anybody have any questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, then, we will open the public hearing for this item, for anybody that would like to come forward to speak, either for or against. And as with any of our public hearings tonight, if you come forward to speak, you will come to the podium and state your name and address, and then, any comments you have for the Planning Commission to consider. Please keep any comments to three minutes or less, and please do make all your comments directly to the Planning Commission and not to other members of the audience. So, with that, again, the public hearing is open, and we'll ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak. Okay. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing for this item. Any questions or further comments from the Planning Commission?
Are none, I'll make-
No, sir.
I'll make a motion that we approve, set all staff comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have item B. And ju, just for clarification, we will go down through each one of these public hearings, and we will call for comments on each one as we open each public hearing. We'll close those public hearings, and then move on to the next items. So, this item B is an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 262.5 acres, located along the west side of Lebanon Pike, and including 4.5 acres of Lebanon Pike right-of-way. The city of Murfreesboro for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and T.DOT is the applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you very much. This next public hearing is for you to consider a plan of services that was prepared for annexation study of an area, as you mentioned, located along the East Forkstones River. On the map, you can see the city limits, and maybe somewhat difficult to see, but in a heavy type that runs in this direction. Contiguous with that is a candy stripe pattern area, which is proposed to be annexed, and it is owned by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And then, there's a smaller area that's shaded green, that's right-of-way, that's owned by T.DOT, which be, is being considered for annexation. This, this total area is 262 acres, or just a little over 262 acres, and it consists of property owned by T.DOT and the U.S. Corps, Army Corps of Engineers. The city, or the properties are contiguous with current city limits. As you can see, on the south boundary, they are contiguous with current city limits. And the majority of the property is either a greenway or a future greenway, which the city will manage via a lease. The annexation study was initiated by the city of Murfreesboro, and when we look to annex properties that are owned by governments like T.DOT, we generally get a consent for annexation, but for those types of agencies, we get something from them that just basically says they don't oppose the annexation. And so, we have received something from T.DOT with, that they are not opposed to the annexation of the 4.5 acres of T.DOT right-of-way. It's about 1,250 linear feet, and it includes the bridge over Stones River. We have communicated with the Corps about their property, but we have not yet received anything in writing with their consent for the annexation. We would not move it forward beyond council if we don't get the instrument that we need. And if you have questions about that later, I'm sure Mr. Ives will be happy to answer those questions about the different types of instruments we need for consent. But we did want to move forward with this annexation study that we have prepared. The, I did include in your packet a plan of study, or a plan of services for the area, which demonstrates that we'll be able to provide most services pretty soon after the effective date of annexation. It is, of course, annexation of the properties will provide clearer lines of authority and responsibility for the fire and rescue department, the police department, and other emergency service providers with respect to these areas that are already owned or, and/or managed by the city of Murfreesboro. So, we'll have a follow-up public hearing as well for property owned by the city of Murfreesboro. And we feel, staff feels, and, and the responses that we receive, that it would be a benefit that if the city already spends money in the area, operates facilities in the area, manages those facilities, or owns property in the next public hearing, that it would be clear who would respond to the property. So, it can sometimes not be the clearest circumstance if it's a city park, or a city greenway managed by the city, but yet, our police department don't respond, or our fire and rescue department. I think the vast majority of calls where our fire and rescue department respond have to do with medical emergencies and not fires. That's, that's really a service that they provide our community. So, we believe that it would be a benefit to clarify that these city-managed properties also have city services, such as fire and police. If you have any questions about the plan of services, I'd be glad to answer them. We do have Mr. Nate Williams here. If you have questions about the Parks and Rec Department and any plans that we have for either this application or the next application, he's ready to answer those questions as well. Mr. Ives is somewhat familiar with the application, and if you were curious about the consents, I think that he can describe those to you. In any case, we'd like to ask that you conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation to, to move forward with the annexation. And I just remembered, with Matthew looking at me, that we would like for, in your recommendation, for you to recommend a modification to the plan of services. So, the area that the Corps owns, it shows going on both sides of the bank of the water. The greenway is only mostly on one side or the other. We would like for the boundary to be pulled back, so it's to the top of the bank of the water. So, it's not two sides of the bank. It's the, it's the side of the bank with the greenway facility, or the future greenway facility, and the top of the water, but not the opposite side of the bank that doesn't actually have any infrastructure or planned improvements in it. I don't have that modified acreage for you, but we will work on revising the plan of services and getting that to city council prior to their recommendation, or prior to their public hearing, which will be held on August 19th. But, late breaking news, I wanted to mention that earlier, is that actually, we want to ask you to, your recommendation to shrink the area a little bit with just including one side of the river, and then to the top of, the top of the bank on the opposite side.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions on that for Ms. Green before we open the public hearing? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will open the public hearing for this item B, and ask anyone that would like to speak regarding this particular item to come forward to the podium, state your name and address, and we will hear your comments. Yes, sir, just come right up here, right to the podium, state your name and address.
My name's Gary Beatty, 5745 Lebanon Pike. My property, John's, this property y'all want to annex, and I'm opposed to annexation because it'll, it'll bring it right up my property line. I don't want to be in the city. It'll, and I don't, I don't, I couldn't understand everything she was saying. I can't hear good, and I can't see good. But, but I, I don't, I don't understand any of this, why you would want to annex government property. It's already belongs to the U.S. Government, but you're wanting to, you're wanting to make it into the city. You ain't gonna get no taxes off of it. So, but anyway, that don't concern me. I just don't want to be in the, in the, in the city, because next jump will be over on my place.
Okay.
Anybody got any questions, and understand what I'm saying?
Yes, sir. If you have any other comments, you can go ahead and make them, and we'll listen to everybody's comments, and then we'll, we'll comment at the end of the public hearing.
Okay. The, the, my other comment is, we got two letters on this, this meeting right here, and I left mine at home and forgot where the, the meeting room is here. And I called my brother, which owns property down the river from me, and he got the same letter, and his wife answered the phone and said they didn't, uh, said they got a letter changing it to August the 19th, so he's not here tonight. And I imagine there's a lot of people that's not here tonight that's opposed to this, but they're confused about when's it supposed to be? What's happening on the 19th?
That'll be the city council meeting, hearing this same item again at the city council level. So, if we, when we finish here tonight, then this would go on to city council. And that'll be on August 19th. So, there are two meetings. The meeting tonight, where the Planning Commission, and then, it goes forward to city council. So, there'll be another chance to come and talk again before anything goes through.
Okay. I guess I'm through.
So, for you, you get two meetings.
Gee.
That exciting.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you for coming out tonight. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Okay. If there is no one else, we will close the public hearing. Any-
Yeah, just to address a couple of things, if you can hear me out there, I'm trying to speak into the microphone. Are you, first of all, just out of curiosity, you can just tell me this real quickly. Are you on the north side of the river or the south side of the river?
North side.
Okay.
And she was talking about that trail runs on both sides of the river. Where does it cross? Does it cross the river anymore?
No, sir. No, sir. She said, "We're only gonna annex the south side of the river."
Did she say that?
Yes, sir. So, the, the picture-
That's not what the pictures show.
Correct. The picture's incorrect. What she was just saying-
It's not even across the river.
Just to the edge of the river, the north edge of the river. But, let me, let me clear this up for you, make this a lot easier for you. We can't annex anybody that doesn't request it. Okay? So, just for, for what it's worth, I'll get, make that very easy for you. The state law says we can't annex property unless it's requested. So, unless somebody, and you give permission for somebody to re, to annex your property, it ain't happening. Just, I mean, now, 10 years ago, it was different, okay? But today, it's, we can't do it. So, hopefully, that'll ease your mind a little bit.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lance.
If I might add just a little bit to that, it's not uncommon for us to study for annexation an area that's larger than what we ultimately end up deciding to annex. So, in this case, it was our decision to study annexing both sides of the river. All of the Corps property on both sides of the river, going from the bridge up to the end of the, where the Coleman farm that the city owns, which you saw on the, on the diagram. We could put that map up on the screen, please. So, where-
I'm gonna have to walk for about-
Okay, sure, fine, come on. I'll come with you.
So, we would annex where the candy striping stops. That's the end of the Coleman farm. Now, we studied annexing both sides of the river, but we, our recommendation, and our, what we're asking, kind of commission to recommend to council, and what we will ask council to do, is annex the south or west side of the river, and the river itself, but not the property on the other side of the river. That makes sense? So, we would not annex, well, we're proposing not to annex the property that would join your property.
Okay, okay. And the Coleman's having any-
We've been in discussion with them. Generally, the Corps doesn't consent, but normally, on something like this, they wouldn't oppose it. So, they would say that they don't oppose the annexation. Can I just come back to the microphone here for a minute?
Where, where the trail has already been built, and where it's going to be extended by another mile or so, the city operates that trail under a lease agreement with the Corps. The reason we want to annex it is so that city police and fire and emergency services would have primary jurisdiction over that property. Because the city's already managing the trail, we want to have more responsibility and more, you know, ability to control, be the ones to first respond if there's an injury or some kind of other incident on the trail. Unfortunately, incidents happen these days, and we want to be able to respond as quickly as we can, efficiently as we can, and we think that's going to be better with city man, control of that, as opposed to Rutherford County, and split jurisdiction, where the city has part of it, the county has part of it. That, that's our reason for annex.
Okay. What about the park over there? Y'all, y'all wouldn't park it?
Okay.
Yes.
I think-
We own it, but it's not within the city limits. We'll come to that one next.
So-
We'll come to that one next. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ives, for clarification. Any other comments, questions from the Planning Commission regarding this item?
If there aren't any, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
And I, before you-
Yes?
Can I clarify that? It's based on our request that you reduce the area, or is it as submitted?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes. We like it when you jump in before we vote on something we shouldn't. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, for clarification, I will make the motion that we approve it with the amended area not being completely figured out yet, but it will be the south side of the river to the north bank of the river, essentially, as it goes through there.
And we'll have, we'll have revised exhibits ready for council on the 19th.
Yes, that too. And subjects to all staff comments.
There we go.
Okay, so we have a revised motion?
Three seconds.
And we have another second? So, now, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to item C. This is the annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 15.5 acres, located along the east side of Lebanon Pike. City of Murfreesboro is the applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you very much. This third public hearing this evening is for you to consider the annexation and plan of services prepared for two properties owned by the city of Murfreesboro. The properties are located east of Highway 231, Lebanon Pike, and is, I think, known as Walter Hill Park property, or Walter Hill Dam Park property. I'm not sure which one you recognize the property as. But it's property that is operated and managed by the city of Murfreesboro. It's kind of got a long history, but it is something that we do manage today. And I think was, came to our attention that although it is a public city facility, it's not very clear who responds to it if there is an incident. So, we would like to request this property be annexed, so that it's clear that it's within the city jurisdiction. Cities manage it, city pays for it, improvements and, and such are done by the city of Murfreesboro. The property consists of two parcels. One is fairly small, and a second larger parcel, and it's 15.5 acres. The smaller parcel is just under a half an acre. We did receive a request to annex these properties from the city manager, and the study was, began in, because of that request. The subject properties are within the urban growth boundary. However, they are not contiguous with current city limits. We believe that even though these properties are not contiguous, or do not touch the city on any boundary, still within our ability to annex as a city because it is owned by the city of Murfreesboro. If the properties you just considered for annexation are annexed, it will be contiguous, but there is some chance that, and the reason we separated them, there's some chance that we don't get instruments we need from the Corps. And so, we separated the annexation so we can move forward with this property owned by the city of Murfreesboro. So, as studied and submitted, it's not contiguous with current city limits. There's a possibility that it could be. So, we're moving forward, though, as if it's not. And we really do believe that the annexation is important for these properties, because it would, as I mentioned with the other properties, provide clear lines of authority and responsibility for the fire and rescue department, the police department, and other emergency service providers with respect to land that's already owned, managed, and maintained by the city of Murfreesboro. I provided a plan of services that provides an outline for the extension of services and a time for when those services will be extended. Essentially, it's already receiving many city services, even though it's not in the city. As we've talked about, there's a public hearing tonight. You'll make a recommendation regarding the plan of services and annexation petitions, which we have received. The city council will hold another public hearing on August 19th. We expect, of course, this project to move forward as submitted. If you have any questions about the plan of services or the annexation study, I'll be glad to answer them. Otherwise, we'd like to request that you hold a public hearing for the annexation of the two city parcels. And then, we do recommend that you do recommend annexation of these parcels.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Any questions before we open the public hearing? Okay. We will open the public hearing for this item C, which is the annexation petition and plan of services for 15.5 acres, located along Lebanon Pike. Anybody that would like to come forward to speak on this item? Okay. We will close the public hearing. Comments, questions, motions?
I need any cap-
Just for briefly respond to the gentleman's question. The city has owned this property for years. For quite a few years, it was actually managed as a public park by Rutherford County. A few years ago, Rutherford County elected to not continue their management of it. And then, for the last several years, it's been relatively a casual park. Certainly, people do use it, and there are, there are people out there. Also, until very, just the last few years, the city would not have been able to make a non-contiguous annexation. So, up until just a few years ago, we couldn't annex that property by itself, because it didn't touch any part of the city. A few years ago, the legislature did allow us to make non-contiguous annexations, and so, we can proceed now to annex that property. And at the same time, we are now spending more money out there. We're, we're actually, we've done some design work, and we're doing some drainage and other kinds of land improvements to it. And we are underway with a master plan study to, to actually create some additional recreational activities out there. The Corps of Engineers has built somewhat of a trailhead right close to the entrance of the park there, where a number of people park, who then use that trail that runs on to the west on the Corps property. So, it's going to become more of a park than it is today. Nope, today, it's pretty much just open space by the river, but it's going to have more park amenities in the not-too-distant future. So, the fact that we're spending more money out there and doing things is another reason that we want to annex it, so that we then have the patrolling for, you know, fire, police, any kind of emergency services. That's why we're moving forward with it at this time.
All right. With that being said, I'm gonna go ahead and move for approval with no caveats, I don't think, right?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, item D. This is a zoning application for approximately 17.48 acres, located over seven city blocks, north of Mercury Boulevard, south of East Castle Street, east of South Highland Avenue, and west of First Avenue, to be rezoned from RM16, RD, RS8, and CCO to PUD and CCO. Murfreesboro Housing Authority is the applicant. Ms. Smith?
Good evening.
Good evening, Planning Commission. You may recall this particular item. We started an initial discussion at your meeting two weeks ago, and the applicant has worked very diligently with staff to get our updated program books. And you'll notice on your dais this evening, there's an additional single page. That literally is hot off the press at about four this afternoon. Uh, that literally is hot off the press at about four this afternoon. So, uh, we wanted to make sure you had that for your program book. Uh, as we can see in the current zoning ordinance, the properties are basically in three contiguous areas. First one is, uh, Parkside Apartments that currently has 46 apartment units. And then you have these three areas off of, uh, this is Mercury Boulevard coming down the front, Hancock, South Hancock Avenue in this area, uh, Minor Street in this particular area, South Bilbrow. Again, Minor Street, Berry Place, and First Avenue are all designated RD and there's a small, single parcel that's an RS 8 zone district. Our general plan designation for this, these particular areas is all suburban residential in our 2035 comprehensive general plan. And our major transportation plan designates Mercury Boulevard, which will soon be renamed, of course, uh, is a five-lane major arterial. And then Highland Avenue, which is over by the Parkside Apartment portion, is actually designated a community collector. Uh, also in our Greenway-Bleway-Bikeway Plan, we show the city proposes, uh, Mercury Boulevard as a future bike lane and Highland Avenue as a proposed bike route in the future. And along Mercury Boulevard, the city is in process of constructing sidewalks on both sides of the sidewalk from Broad Street all the way over to, uh, Rutherford. And phase one of that project is starting this fall. Uh, you may recall, we already at your last, about a month ago, we had processed or made recommendations for several right-of-way abandonments. Last week, Thursday, the council took action and passed for first reading all of those abandonments, uh, through the area, which includes Essex Court off of South Hancock, Burns Court, which is off of Minor, and Berry Place from First Avenue all the way to South Bilbrow and to the courtyard beyond. Uh, you may recall that this particular project includes a couple of different housing mixes, so it includes single-family detached and duplex units, as well as two-story townhouse units, three-story row house units, and a mixed-use commercial, uh, which starts over here at First Avenue to accommodate a future anticipated, um, signal at this section. The project does include some additional right-of-way and construction anticipated along First Avenue, uh, as it gets built out. And as they will mention, phase one is in the near term in the Parkside area for hopefully next year. And then the other portion has a longer lead time on it. Uh, going to this last page, I know you can't see it in that little tiny writing, but just the highlights are the, uh, proposed, uh, PUD would allow for a density to stay at 16.73 units to the acre at Parkside, which is what it already has today. Uh, the Mercury area would increase to an 8.51 units to the acre. And the other thing that's of importance is if you look at the open space in that table, the open space that would be provided in the Parkside includes an entire pocket park, which is 44% of open space. Our standard is only 20, so they are far exceeding, uh, the standard. And then in the Mercury area is at 36%, again, far exceeding the standard. Last thing to note, uh, for this area, you'll notice that staff is, uh, supportive of the rezoning request as to density layout, access, bulk, open space, and the provision of services as listed, uh, reasons in our staff report. And then secondly, we believe that the revised exterior building architecture for the project has significantly moved forward. We're probably at a good 90% product with about 10% that can be handled during our site plan, uh, process that we would recommend that it is, uh, being compatible with the adjacent neighborhood. Uh, and a final note is we did notice this evening, and we will be doing a little bit of extra homework, is there is one area, all of the setback requirements are requesting a 10-foot minimum to their front, what I'll call primary facade, which could be like your porch, is along Hancock Street. Uh, the westerly side of the street looks like those might be, uh, potential five-foot, but that's only because we're trying to get right-of-way to have the city sidewalk in the city right-of-way versus on the private property, which currently it looks like it may be on the private property. But we will make sure to, uh, go through that exercise beforehand because the other thing they're providing is a pullout for the bus. So I'm not sure if part of that right-of-way request is so that that bus stop street is actually in the city right-of-way. So with that, they, we ask that they add that exception to the bottom of their table so that this body understood that particular component. And with that, I would like to introduce, uh, this evening, we do have Thomas Rowe from the Housing Authority and their architect, Ms. Margaret Butler, to provide a presentation for you this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Holly. My name is Margaret Butler. I'm the architect working with the Housing Authority. Uh, I'm with a firm called McCarty-Hulseuple-McCarti. And, uh, this evening, we thought we might start, um, we have some slides to show you as well, but we thought we might just kind of kick it off with a fly-through video to orient everyone. And so I'm gonna see if I can get that to start. There we go. So here we are, we're in the parking lot of Mercury Plaza across the street, looking across Mercury there at First Avenue. You're seeing the commercial building and some of the product along, um, Mercury. Uh, here, you're looking, um, east toward, um, uh, you're on Minor Street. You're seeing a linear park there and some of the townhome product. Uh, we're driving down Minor Street here with park on the left, single-family and duplex homes on the, um, on the right. And here, we're jumping up again over that area. Minor Street is running along and you're seeing the homes, um, the, uh, little U-shaped area there at Carver. And we're driving down the street here on Mercury. You're seeing the row house product along Mer- Mercury Boulevard. Um, and then we're coming closer to Hancock here. You're, uh, again, seeing some townhomes along Mercury, um, a green space there in the center that connects over to the Patterson Park Complex. And then lastly, we're gonna zoom over to Parkside. Uh, we're coming over Patterson Park Complex and, um, this is the Parkside along East Castle Street. Um, and you see the central green there, uh, that all the, the homes will face. And we'll kind of end there as well, just kind of understanding, you know, the lower scale there at the front and then, um, a little more of the density toward the back because the homes along East Castle are a little bit smaller, but they have that central green. So that gives you an idea perhaps of the, the scope of the project. And now I will switch to the slides. Let's see. Okay. Uh, we, you know, as you will recall, a couple of weeks ago, we went through some of the background of the research and the planning, the charrette efforts that went into the planning. So tonight, I'll just focus on the, the master plan itself and the architecture and kind of go over that again. We've been, we're very, um, excited to have the opportunity to, to, to look at this area along Mercury and bring a more updated housing product to that area, uh, for the Housing Authority. Um, and I just have to say thanks to the planning staff. They've worked, you know, you had some concerns about the architecture last time and we have worked really closely with them. They've been a superb help in, in, in getting us across the...
And we can tell. Thank you so much. We know y'all worked very hard over the last few weeks and so it's, uh, we can certainly see that.
Well, it's our pleasure. Um, we, we want to get it, we want to get it right for, um, the Housing Authority. We want to get it right for Murfreesboro. So, um, we're open to always moving in whatever path that you all want to go. Um, so the, the plan, um, as we talked about, as Holly mentioned, has seven blocks. The, uh, Parkside property along East Castle, um, here, uh, along Mercury Boulevard at Hancock. Uh, we have the two parcels there, along Minor Street. We have, uh, what used to be, uh, Burns Court. We have a new, um, kind of, uh, quadrangle or, or pocket park, if you will, uh, with a, um, a small rear drive that comes off and extends Carver, uh, along Minor Street. We have more single-family duplex. And then as you come down closer to the commercial and across from Mercury Plaza, that's where we place the, the commercial building at the corner of First and Mercury Boulevard and surround a more dense, um, level of housing along, along Mercury to help as a transition. And then as you saw on the video, the housing product starts to break down a little bit to get more to the scale of the residential neighborhood there as it moves north closer into the neighborhood. So, go through those blocks very quickly. This is the block for Parkside. As Holly mentioned, we have 46 units there now. We're replacing those 46 units, uh, smaller scale along East Castle to relate to the smaller homes, uh, across the street. And then, um, those are townhomes and then row houses to the, to the rear, south and east and west here. Parking moved to the side so that the common, um, green areas, the space that can be enjoyed by the residents. Moving down, um, now into the Mercury, uh, area that's being redone along Minor, Carver Street, uh, as we talked last time, have an extension. What really begins to be served more is an alley. This is one of our exceptions. We're requesting that this be allowed to be 20 feet rather than the 22. We've looked at the fire truck access and worked through all that. Um, but that just, uh, since it's not a front, frontal street, these homes will front toward their park, pocket park, uh, and these homes will front toward Bilbrow. So, uh, we felt like that that was an appropriate, um, scale. It does have some visitor parking there for all the residences and they all have their own driveway. Um, moving along, um, uh, east toward Minor, uh, along Minor Street, kind of the S-curve there. This is where we begin to develop a more public linear green or park, if you will, with some walking trails and a more intense level of landscaping for all the homes to enjoy. Uh, single-family and duplex along the north side. And then facing the park and, and, um, kind of starting to enclose this pervious, uh, paving park, parking area, we have, um, townhomes along, um, lining that side of the, uh, south side of the park. Then, uh, back to Mercury Boulevard at Hancock. Um, we have, our central focus here is a green that we've, uh, organized the houses and the parking off that, thinking that that green will start to really open this neighborhood up to the, the lovely lawn play area there in front of Patterson Park so that there's an attempt to connect those. And then we'll have this area for the rover stop. Uh, it currently stops there, so we'll be doing a little, um, pergola-type pavilion for, for folks to wait there. And, um, we have single-family and duplex along Minor and the rest of the, the homes are townhomes. Moving, um, east, um, this is South Bilbrow in Mercury. We have townhomes, uh, row houses, uh, along, um, Mercury. Um, and then finally to block, uh, seven, as I mentioned, we have the, um, commercial building that does have, or mixed-use building, I should say, it does have, uh, one, um, uh, bedroom residential on the upper level and two levels of office, um, on the ground and, um, second floor. Um, a unit count and you'll see, as you can tell by the colors, there's quite a mix. We tried to mix it up and so you don't have all one bedrooms, one area, one all-two bedroom. So it's mixed across the site. Oops, sorry. We're getting to the, um, street elevations. This is if we all stood there and could see it flat, which we understand, that's why we tried to do the fly-through because you don't always see it this way, but it's a good way to study how the elevations work. And this is an area that, uh, on Mercury Boulevard, looking north at, at Hancock, is one of the areas that we looked really closely with staff at, um, obviously trying to pull in more of the traditional forms and also trying to make it so that it feels more like larger homes that are there together. So that was the effort, uh, along Minor. Again, bringing those, uh, we have some two-story duplexes, one-story single-family. We have small homes and that feels like a larger home. So we're trying to, to mix it up and make it feel more single-family. And then another, uh, key elevation along East Castle, looking south to Parkside. Again, a mix of the, um, single-family and duplex is the little pocket park there at Carver. Bilbrow, um, between Mercury Boulevard and, um, just north of Minor Street and the Mercury Boulevard north of, between Carver and First Avenue, row houses. And I'm sorry, this is really meant to be viewed all the way across. Perhaps you can see that in your booklet when you lay it flat, but, uh, again, we have the Minor Street at Bilbrow, all the single-family duplexes there. And then these are just the extensions along, uh, Mercury Boulevard. As I mentioned last time, uh, total square footage of development from the Housing Authority of almost 54,000 for Parkside and, um, 192, 102 for Mercury, close to 200,000 square feet of development. Now the architecture, let's get to that a little more closely. I won't, and I can go back and answer any questions, but, um, again, on our single-family, um, homes, two-bedroom homes, we have a variety of three different styles. As you can see, they're pulling in traditional forms. They're not a, actually replicas of a different style, but that's what we see in the neighborhood. Those homes are, you know, um, uh, many of them are smaller and they have, uh, traditional characteristics, but don't really identify with any particular style. So that's exactly what we were trying to, to emulate. Um, they have the, um, three-bedroom duplex homes that are intended or designed to look like one large home. Uh, the two-bedroom townhomes, uh, along Mercury. Uh, this is a, actually, uh, this is the floor plan of a double, of two, two units, but this is actually a composition of 10 units. But you really can't tell that there are 10 units there, we hope, because we hope, um, we've been able to, to make those, again, look like larger homes together. The Parkside unit, uh, for, uh, three-bedroom, two-story. And then the rest of these are just variations of the Parkside. They have a little bit tweaking of different plans, but largely the same elevations as that is developed as, uh, a single kind of component of Parkside. So materials, um, I think Holly may have noted, noted this, but, um, we plan to use different colors of brick. Um, the railings will be black wrought iron looking picket railings. We'll have a compen, a combination of, uh, roof shingles, you know, just a standard palette of grays and brownish grays in the roof shingles. We'll be using some metal, um, standing seam looking metal roofing for canopies, porch roofs, that type of thing. And then, of course, on the, um, um, commercial building, like, um, standard commercial construction, you'll have storefront, metal panel, that, and brick, that type of thing. So just some before and after still shots. Here we are looking, um, close to Hancock Street, looking over to Patterson Park and what that might, might feel like is the, the, the green extends into the Patterson Park area. Here we are, uh, along Mercury Boulevard, uh, at First Avenue here and what that will feel like with the new commercial building and the, um, row houses along Mercury Boulevard. Uh, again, we're, now we're looking the other direction toward Patterson Park. You see Parkside here in its existing condition. This is what it will look like when it's completed. Minor Street, always the recognizable S-curve there on Minor. And you'll see how, um, the, uh, linear park starts to come into play with houses on each side of the street there, looking at that. Um, and then, uh, on Minor, where Burns Court was, see how the, um, pocket park and all the homes facing the pocket park. And then Minor Street looking west toward Patterson Park and the scale and the feel of those single-family homes. And then lastly, um, a view of the commercial building at the corner of Mercury and First Avenue, looking from Mercury and then looking back to Mercury before and after. As Holly has mentioned also, we have these requested zoning exceptions. Uh, one, uh, to reduce the number of, of parking spaces required for Parkside. Um, the Housing Authority was able to give us counts on the cars. Um, they historically track that. And where the... And where the, whereas they now have 69 cars, they usually have under 60 cars on the side at any given time. We will be providing 83 units and feel like that that is, um, very adequate, uh, for, for that. Uh, the minimum 10-foot, uh, building setbacks to the porches or any major form on the building, uh, 20 feet along Mercury Boulevard. And then requesting the 20-foot width at the, um, Loop or Alley Street, uh, as an extension of Carver rather than the 22 feet. So, um, happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. And again, we certainly appreciate all the hard work and changing and getting that to us and getting us our hard copies a day or two ahead of times. Very nice. So, questions and comments from the Planning Commission?
I've got one probably easy question. What, what is the typical right-of-way along Mer, along Mercury? I mean, the setbacks, sorry. You know Martin Luther King?
Um, I'm not sure.
The exception is for 20 feet. Holly?
Well, I, I know that there's been some recent, uh, right-of-way dedications along Mercury. So the question is, is today's versus what's been recorded? And, but I think currently it's about 20 feet off of, uh, the street. But the biggest request by the fire department is the three-story commercial buildings and the three-story, uh, row houses need to be no further than 30 feet from the edge of the pavement to get their ladder access over to the building. So that's the other thing that we've kind of had to watch for that particular access point, at least for those that are over there by First Street and Bilbro. The other ones could actually set back further. Uh, but as we looked at it, there's actually a swale type of easement. So when they build the new sidewalk, there'll be a two-foot landscape, five-foot sidewalk, and then a swale that goes down. That's a easement, uh, that's recorded. And so it would be, uh, from that back of block 20 feet when we get the new one installed.
Any other questions or comments?
I've got a small question. It's a good-looking project. I just, and it really has nothing to do with the project itself, but the name. With the pending name change to, uh, Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard, was there any thoughts to name it something relative to Martin Luther King Boulevard instead of Mercury, since Mercury will no longer exist?
Well, I think that conversation may have had, that, that we became aware of that after we'd kind of started. And I'm not sure. I would have to defer to, um, Mr. Rowe on the thought. We, we named it Mercury Park to pick up a little bit of mercury in Parkside, but I'd have to defer.
Thomas Rowe with the Housing Authority. Whenever we started this, it was Mercury. And so the easy part was Mercury Park. We really haven't discussed the name going forward.
Okay.
I have a couple of quick questions. Could you confirm the number of required parking spaces where you're asking for the 83? I think it's 92. Would that?
Yes, I think so. Let me look at the chart to make sure I remember that correctly.
So you're saying 104, Ms. Smith, would be the standard requirement?
Do you have it in front? Okay. Thank you.
So I appreciate that the, uh, effort went into, you know, study what, what is happening there. I'm curious what the city's opinion is on the, you know, nobody ever wants to be shy on parking and what that does to street overflow parking.
This, this is a similar ask to what they did with Oakland Court, um, back when, um, Oakland Court came through the rezoning process. They submitted data showing that, that the parking demand at their, at their developments was much less than what our parking requirements, um, demanded. And that during the Oakland Court, um, rezoning process, a similar reduction in parking was approved based upon their demonstrated demand for parking at their facilities. So this, this is consistent with, with that previous ask?
The percentage is...
I believe so. That'd be correct.
Yes, it's one, that's correct. Um, it's actually 1.8 cars per unit and found that to be significantly larger than, um, the Housing Authority gave us parking records. And, um, as you mentioned, um, quite a few residents don't have cars and, and don't have multiple cars per, per unit many times. So it was felt that not only were we meeting what their historically had said that they, they required, but gave plenty more to, to accommodate any visitors or anything.
Thank you. And is the 10-foot setback all on Mercury Boulevard itself or in the whole entire development?
The whole entire development. Actually 20 feet on Mercury and then 10 feet on, on every other street.
Every other street, okay.
With the exception of the five on Hancock that we've got to work out. And that, that little section of Hancock actually has a 60-foot right-of-way. And, um, you know, when, when we look at it further in, in working with Huddleston Steel, uh, it will either make sure the five-foot is, is working well there or may request consideration of 50 feet if that's what we need. So we still have to work out that detail.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Butler.
Thank you.
And did, was that, was that the, all of your presentations before we opened the public hearing? I didn't mean to cut y'all off, if you have a, okay. All right. So then we will open the public hearing for this item and ask anyone to come forward that would like to speak, either for or against this zoning application.
Hello. My name's Michael Nelson. My address is 601 South Highland Avenue. Uh, not really for or against necessarily, just had questions that, uh, wanted to get clarified pertaining to the property that I have, which is on the, uh, I, I don't know if y'all can bring the map up again or not, but it's pertaining to the, uh, South Highland and East Castle side. And, and it may be more appropriate that, I, I mean, I address y'all, they come up and answer. But I mean, it's, I have several different questions, so I, I may just ask it, sit down, they answer, ask it, sit down, go back and forth, if that's okay.
What you'll do is you'll ask all your questions, and then we'll let everybody else come up that has any questions.
Okay.
During the public hearing. And after the public hearing is closed, then we'll start addressing all the questions. Is that, okay?
Sure. I will try to keep them concise. Um, uh, I don't know if this is relevant to, uh, any kind of eminent domain issue or not, but I just want to make sure that my property, which is right at that corner, just wanted, because I've, I've gotten a few letters saying something along the lines of, hey, we want to buy your property. And I have no idea who it's from, because I have a life to live. But also, uh, concerning the, uh, what's going on for those apartment complexes behind my property, uh, when is the anticipation for the construction or deconstruction and then construction of that to start? The road that is right next to my house, that, let's say road, it's mostly a, a driveway or a place to park, parking lot. I remember seeing a while back that there was, uh, a request for abandonment of right-of-way there, but, uh, I was unable to attend that meeting. I'm not really sure what that means or what that means specifically for that piece of property there. On the paper that I got regarding the, uh, notice for this meeting, uh, it mentioned that the zoning changes were from a, a, a lot of R-whatever, RS, R-whatever, uh, but it's changing to PUD and CCO. CCO was not defined in the document behind as to what that is, what it means. Uh, and does that matter for that particular property? I, I assume CCO is some, commercial, something, something.
City core overlay.
Oh, city core, okay, okay. Which that's going to be a number, the, the next item on this, correct? Uh, Part Five?
Well, that, we are making some changes to the city corlay, uh, overlay, uh, guidelines.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
Different, but yes, it encompasses some of the same things.
Okay. Uh, for the section for PUD, it said in the document that it was residential, commercial, and industrial, like it's pretty much a general all-purpose, uh, use. Uh, I was just curious if that, I, 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 in the presentation, I saw that commercial was part of what's going on at the corner of Mercury, but, uh, it wasn't clear if there was any commercial or industrial, whatever, happening, uh, behind the property that's close to mine. For the people who live in these properties, uh, what is the, uh, and this isn't, I, not directly related to me, but, and I don't think any of them are here who live in these houses at the moment, but what is the procedure for them? Like, do they get notice? Are they more or less kicked out while that is being destroyed, um, and then rebuilt? And, uh, will they be, you know, be able to get back in? I, those are questions that I probably don't necessarily am affected by, but I'm very sure that they would be affected by. The number of units in the property behind mine, uh, how many is there now and how many will there be afterwards? Uh, my, my concern for asking that is just traffic, uh, since that parking lot is, I mean, I, it's right up next to, uh, I, I think the distance from the parking lot to the siding of my house is, I mean, I could probably spit to hit it. I mean, it's very, very close. So if that's going to open up a lot of traffic, a lot more, then that's something I would be concerned about. I noticed also in one of the doc, uh, in the picture for the property that's behind mine, and I noticed in a lot of them, that there's a lot of trees. And it's, I, I, it's not clear what kind of trees those are going to be. If they're Bradford pears, please do not plant Bradford pears. Um, I, I had one in a yard at a house I used to live at. One storm, boom. And, and thankfully, it wasn't next to the house, but it was, it was a big deal. Um, I, I'm, I'm not an arborist or, uh, you know, I, I don't know what to recommend in, in, instead of that, but definitely not that. Um, and then, uh, last question, and this pertains not just to my property, but all the properties that are, uh, adjacent to, or, or, or next to the ones that are in this, uh, utilities. Uh, when the construction is going on, is there going to be an interruption of utilities for electric, water, gas, whatever? Uh, and if so, how long, uh, how much notice would I have? I think that is all the questions I have. So, uh, ready to stay or go or?
I've tried to make a list, and I think everybody else has. And so we will try to address all those at the end of the public hearing.
Sure. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks for coming out. Who else would like to speak tonight on this item? Anybody? We will close the public hearing. And we will begin trying to answer some of these questions and, uh, at, to a point. And then, you know, we may have to have you meet directly with some of the staff at some point or have them call you directly for some of the more specific items that are directly related to your property. But in general, some of the other items that are going to affect, uh, many people, I think we should address some of those questions.
Madam Chair, I'm, I'm going to take one of them, and then Ms. Smith and, um, and the development team, I think, can answer.
Thank you.
Majority of them. I wanted to just, the gentleman asked about, about planned development zoning. And planned development zoning is, I, I like to call it plan-specific zoning. So, so what they have submitted in their, in their plan, in the, in the booklet that, um, that they've submitted to the planning department, the Planning Commission is considering and that the city council will be considering, becomes the zoning for that property. And so, um, uh, the, I know the flyer said that it could allow commercial, residential, and industrial uses. That's just, um, in general. But, but whatever uses are identified in the plan booklet and where the plan booklet identifies those uses to be located is where, is where, is where they're limited to going. So they can't deviate from that, from that plan booklet as far as uses. They can't identify commercial to be there along Mercury and then put it on, on Highland Avenue. So they're, they're bound by what, by what they submit. So I wanted to just clarify that for you, that, that, um, they can't go in and, um, and do any type of commercial or anything like that and put it wherever they want to. It's whatever they've submitted in their booklet. And I think the specifics relative to the zoning, Ms. Smith, is much more well-versed than that than I am, as well as the development team.
There was one thing I think I can answer too that might, just something that I remembered you asking, just for what it's worth from the traffic standpoint. It's the same, in this area right here, is the same exact number of units going back in there that's currently there. The format is a little bit different. What you might want to kind of look at is, kind of, you know, in our booklet where it's kind of got a layout of that, um, you'll actually have, instead of, you'll have a parking area in between your property and the park now versus a built, you know, a, a, a unit there, but shouldn't increase the, the property value. I do want to, the other thing that I don't know, you guys, I want to make sure I'm square on this. He mentioned the, um, the abandonment, the right-of-way abandonment close to him. I, I was thinking that was on down the road at the other end. Is that, was there, did we have to abandon that right-of-way?
It was Vaughn Street. So actually Vaughn Street, which is the driveway that he referred to, that's off of South Highland, that was actually city right-of-way back in, I think Mr. Ives found it back in 1958. It was dedicated to the city, but it's never was used as such. So they actually have processed that and the right-of-way dedication, uh, has been deeded to the property for Parkside for that particular section, but easements have been retained, uh, for that particular one next to you. So that one is actually, uh, completed.
Yeah. And I was just also going to mention, you wouldn't even know if it was a, it was a, it was a right-of-way or a street. It was essentially part of the parking lot of the existing complex. And that, that right-of-way abandonment was, um, was way out ahead of all the other requests that the Housing Authority made. I think y'all considered that in March, I believe.
Yeah.
Right. And that was due to their grant funding, that they needed to have all the property in their possession, fee title, uh, for that, or fee simple. And then to add to the Parkside, it'll be 46 units and 46 units, and the bedroom mix will be the exact same thing as it is today. So, uh, that's not changing any. Uh, and then when it comes to, um, we talked about the Vaughn, uh, the CCO, what that is is it's a city core overlay district, which is over your property and most of the area. Generally, when a, a planned unit development is applied for, we keep that overlay district in place, so it's just staying the way it is today. Um, as far as the, um, eminent domain, I, I don't think that that would affect, uh, any of your property. The Housing Authority is only utilizing that property, which is theirs. I think they've only purchased one additional lot, uh, in the mix that somebody wanted to sell to them that made sense for their project, but it is not, uh, a part of this project, uh, as we've seen it. And then as far as, there is no industrial in this particular planned unit development. And then I would maybe ask for the applicant to come up and talk about the, uh, when will the Parkside project start? Maybe address utilities and then the process for the exiting residence while construction demolitions.
Again, Thomas Rowe with the Housing Authority. Anticipated completion date would be December of '23. We were just notified today of our funding allocation for the tax credits for 2021, so we'll have until the end of '23 to get the project completed. As far as the residents go, we've already had three meetings with residents. They are aware of what we're trying to do. They will be relocated, just like we've relocated all the residents in Oakland Court. And we pay for all moving expenses and set them up in somewhere else to go. Our goal will be to move the residents from Parkside, provided timing and the construction goes good, uh, all of Mercury will be moved to Oakland Phase Two. So then we will move Parkside residents into the Mercury development while we're anticipating getting it started. And then when Parkside is finished, we'll move them back into Parkside. Whoever lives there now has the same opportunity to come back.
You mentioned when it would be completed. When will the construction start?
Um, if it works like what we're doing with Phase Two, we'll be closing next summer and construction will start probably in August or September of '22.
Do you, he also asked about, do you anticipate any utility disruptions?
Um, that I will have to, I mean, I don't know that I can answer that one.
I'm sure there'll be issues with utilities, but I would think they'd be notified.
No lights for weeks.
Can't do that. Herr Jones and members of Planning Commission, I'm Bill Huddleston with Huddleston Steel Engineering. We'll be handling the design and redesign of utilities on this project. It's, there's, it's a great benefit to the city of Murfreesboro, and it doesn't get mentioned with this project or with Oakland Court, but we've got a lot of old sewers in these areas. Some of it's vetrified clay. Uh, we've got, uh, water lines that aren't big enough. So we do a lot of reconstructing of sewer and water lines. So we're bringing good infrastructure to this area that's, that's lacking it right now. Uh, we do work very hard to minimize utility interruptions. Uh, Water Resources Department isn't going to let us, uh, interrupt utilities, their utilities for that long. I, I imagine that Electric Department and Gas won't either. I imagine that Electric Department and Gas won't either, especially on the fringes. We don't see a lot of utility interruptions, but they, they should be, and I anticipate they will be minimal.
Thank you, Mr. Huddleston.
I would like to add on, regarding the eminent domain question, there is no city or housing authority eminent domain action being undertaken in connection with, and the city is not offering to buy your property. Those are private offers from either investors, or realtors, or someone who wants to flip a house. I don't know, but it's not the city that's offering to buy property.
Okay. What other questions, comments?
Again, Margaret Butler with McCarty, also from McCarty. And I think the gentleman had one question about Bradford pears.
Oh, yeah.
That was a layup.
Stand up for the layup?
No, and you will find, and I can share with you, the booklet does have, we're working with Reagan Smith Landscape Architects, and they have a beautiful assortment of canopy, understory, and foundation planning materials that will be used.
Okay. What other questions and comments, any of your concerns from the planning commission?
If there are none, I make a motion to approve subject to staff comments, and I think working out the setback on, is it Hancock?
Yes.
Subject to all staff comments. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Thanks again for all your hard work getting us to that point. We appreciate it, and thank you again for all you're doing for the city of Murfreesboro. Our next item is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance pertaining to Section 13, Planned Development Regulations and Section 24, Overlay District Regulations, Article Six, CCO, the City Core Overlay District. City of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant. Ms. Smith?
Well, hello again. I don't think you would want to look at text for a zoning ordinance change, so I will not be using the PowerPoint presentation. But you may recall, last meeting, we started to have a discussion, just briefly to give you an oversight for our CCO area. You may recall back in January of 2020, the city council made some substantive changes to the district boundaries, as well as to the ordinance itself. And now that the staff has had about a year and a half of utilizing that document, we have looked at some efficiencies, some clarifications, and some modifications that may make sense, given where we are with the city today. So, as stated previously, we also are looking at a small modification to Section 13, our Planned Development Regulations, with this ordinance change. That would only affect one paragraph in Section 13, but then have an entire removal and replacement of Section 24, Article Six, of the CCO portion of our zoning ordinance. So in the Planned Development Regulations section, currently, it only allows exceptions to overlay districts in the battlefield protection and the gateway design overlay districts. So that means any changes that somebody wants in the CCO, or any of our other overlay districts, they cannot request those the way our policy is written today. So staff has proposed a recommended change there that would allow for, as long as they put it as an exception with their planned development, this body and the council can actually make those considerations, even if it is different than the CCO guidelines. So if the guideline says you must have a average front setback of 15, and somebody wants 10, they normally could not request that because CCO is an overlay district, which is not covered by our planned development. So that's an easy change, makes sense. If you all agree with those changes as they come forward, then you could approve those modifications. Getting into the City Core Overlay District itself, really, the text in the CCO clarifies that it's not a standalone document. It actually is still subject to our design guidelines, as well as trying to be cognizant of our historic bottoms and our North Highland area, sub-areas, that those should be incorporated. And really, again, specifying that any exceptions need to be specifically stated in the planned development. And lastly, clarifies that it should be adhering to the most approximate base zoning. So you'll notice a lot of our planned developments will say this is very similar to a RS6. This is similar to a RSA Type III. We always provide those comparative analysis so that you can see it's functioning like this zone district, but here's where the exceptions are, but the PUD or PRD are specified as that planned development is approved. But this, again, just clarifies that they need to specify it, and this is why we use an approximate zone district. As far as parking provisions, I think that's probably one of the more substantive issues. Currently, when we're doing non-residential properties, we have a limitation or an allowance for a reduction of parking on-site for 25% if there's available on-site street parking, and only 50% reduction if it's within 7, 500 feet of a city-owned parking structure. So this is mostly on the fringes of our central business district. So based on just actual real-life, how we're working with that, we think it's more appropriate to increase those to an allowance for a 50% reduction for on-site parking, if parking is available, and by that, it used to be striped, and actually available. Also allow for up to 75% if it's within 750 feet of a structure. So, you know, currently, by the Justice Center, we have the very large structure there, and we anticipate future structures that would allow for that. So the thought process is, what would a person be willing to walk for the particular non-residential use? And we think that 750 feet is an appropriate use. If you think of most restaurant-type uses, people are willing to walk further, but they would still have to provide some on-site parking availability. And then, lastly, we also added a paragraph, because the CCO is so different from all of our districts, if there's a strange situation that comes up, the planning director can look at an assessment, provide proof of what's available, and then potentially allow for some other parking deviations. And in a lot of cases, we've seen usually parking agreements for anything that's larger, where they'll actually have a parking agreement with a neighbor, that still is allowed. So really, the CCO is just talking about what is allowed or accepted in the CCO district. The other big topic was open space. You might recall, we've had many a discussion on formal open space, and how does that work? And why are we requiring so much? And why can't we include the rooftop? We heard all those comments, and we've actually reached out to our stakeholders as well. And so, in those particular areas, by default, would require a 20% open space per our current design guidelines. Staff is actually proposing that we move that down to 15%, and that's really because it's really a, not a suburban nature. Within most of our CCO, it's much more urban, and believe that 15% would be more appropriate. And as far as the formal open space is considered, we believe that really, only when you have eight residential units or more, so it's mostly the townhome PRDs that you look at, should trigger formal open space, because anything less than that, you're not necessarily neighbors. But when you start to get a certain amount of mass, then it makes sense that you have spaces that they can create their own neighborhood amongst themselves, but still be able to allow for rooftops. So that rooftop provision here, we've actually said you can actually count it towards open space, which means they don't have to have it on the ground. And then, secondly, it can count towards their formal open space, because when you think about it, some areas, they'd rather have their own private open space that they're accessing that's protected and secure. And so those changes we've proposed in the application process. And secondly, for commercial uses, we're looking at, really, formal open space should not be applicable unless it's more than one and a half acres. So when you look at a lot of the really tiny lots, we're talking about 45 feet by 50 feet, that would be extremely hard to try to provide formal open space of any sort within our current ordinance, so that would actually remove those things. And then, lastly, going through the ordinance, kind of a last couple of times, you'll notice there were a couple of highlighted items in the text, and that was based on some of the input that we received outside of our, our department. But we also noticed a couple, of course, you look at things long enough, you start seeing additional things that you need to address. Staff would like to add just two other changes. First one is over on page five, under the parking district. The second item, where it talks about single-family residential attached townhouse structures, the bottom of that same paragraph talks about a multifamily dwelling unit, but it actually should be a single-family residential attached townhome, because multifamily is addressed directly below that. And then, the other area that we noticed was on page eight, under open space. That first item talks about exceptions or exemptions, excuse me, and it shows industrial and single-family, but it also needs to be single-family detached in zero lot line with a maximum of two units attached, and two families. So basically, single-family and duplex units should be exempt. That's how all of the other policy is within this and our design guidelines. We wanted to make sure we were consistent. And then, lastly, there were, you know, a handful of what I'll call smaller, less impactful areas. I'll just highlight three of them. One's accessory structures would require owner occupation on-site, which is still far better than outside the CCO, because outside the CCO, you would need BZA approval. You would have to have it only rented to a family member, and if you converted it back out, you would have to change the unit back out. So the CCO allows a bit more encouraging to have that kind of use. The second item was limiting a prominence of garages on the fronts of buildings. If you've looked at most of the CCO, many of it does not have garage units. So when you introduce a garage setting to it, especially if it's closer to the street, it, it really changes the character of those neighborhoods. So there's a provision in there now that looks at the facade. When you look at the front facade of the building, no more than half should be garage if your entry feature is at the same frontage with the rest of the building. And if you have kind of a, I'll call it an extended porch in front of your garage, then no more than 60% of that frontage should be garage. So the idea is, is that you get at least a little bit of reduction in that for the single-family product. And really, as we get our PRDs, or townhouses, or duplexes on a collector's street, those actually force the parking into the backyard, so that's not necessarily the issue, but it changes it there. And then, the last one I'll leave you with, unless you have further questions, would be the location of HVAC, meters, trash. If you'll notice, a lot of times, that's a second thought, and it usually ends up on the person's patio, so that they really can't fully utilize their patio. Parkside Apartments is a good example of that. You go out your back, and you have all your utilities just sitting there. So this basically says you need to identify them on your plans, and really try to not have those in the patios, and of course, not have them visible by right-of-way. So we were very blessed to have Matthew Blomley, Brad Barbie, and myself work together closely, and then Greg coming in and having several meetings kind of on some of these deeper items. But we think that the proposed changes with the two additional ones I mentioned this evening are going to help us get a better product in our CCO, and really provide some clarity that we think, now that we've been working with it for a year and a half, will help us do our job better and help the development community as well. So with that, if you have any questions, this is a notice public hearing, and we are so excited.
Okay. Questions?
I've got one.
Go ahead.
You mentioned there was a way to get an exception to the parking area, parking requirements based upon a parking structure or parking garage being within so many feet. Does that matter whether it's a public or private parking structure?
Currently, it states pri, uh, public.
Okay.
Because private is actually handled in the current parking regs. So our current parking reg says you can have an agreement with a neighbor, let's say, and we've seen this several times in the CCO, where the neighbor has 20, 30 parking spots next to, let's say, a church that wants to locate. They're able to have an agreement in place, and then be able to utilize that parking, which is private parking that's available. But it's basically in writing, not just a gentleman, "Hey, Joe said I can borrow his parking lot." So that is the difference that we do have. But it's in our code, in our parking section, versus in the CCO written text.
Does that account for a public parking lot that is privately owned, i.e. something like a central parking? Is that kind of part of?
Well, no. Where I was really going with this is, I, so, we'll call it, you know, the rent, the redevelopment of the First United Methodist Block, okay? So what I'm hearing you say is that someone would not, if some area around there wanted to be redeveloped, and they did not have the ability to have on-site parking, they could not utilize this exception, because that is a, that, that parking structure that's going to be in that redevelopment is going to be, is going to be privately owned, or they have an agreement with that privately-owned garage operator to have so many spaces specific to their development. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
And I'm looking over at probably Sam and Greg, because I know that the One East College property, if I recall, has about 150 parking spaces that they're anticipating would be available for public use. But what we may want to do is take a look at that language, because the intent, I think, would be that that would be available public parking, but just because it's owned by somebody else, I don't know how the, the ruling or word, that might be something that, you know, we sit down with the attorney, and if that's the intent, that we could have them utilize that, because it's publicly available, we may want to wordsmith it.
Before you go too far, because if that, that spurs development in that area, and someone's going to want an exception to this parking rule, that there may be other parking garages developed, is my point.
Mr. Halliburton, just to chime in, the publicly-owned parking lot language is, is existing in the, in the zoning ordinance today, but, but you bring up a great point, because here we have a garage that, that will be part of a private development, but where there is public parking spaces that, that are proposed. And so I think that we may need to take a look at the language to see if, if we need to modify that. But I think that, that, that's something that, that we can do to, to work with our legal department, and to, and with Mr. Huddleston and Mr. McKnight, to, to fine-tune that language prior to city council.
I think the One East College parking is, it is public parking, but it's only a time limit. So it's not like they could dedicate parking for a different, you know, entity, because it'll be, the first two hours is free.
Yeah, I think, I think.
After that, it's charged.
I think it is more akin to, even though it's not a public development, I think it's more akin to public parking than it would be parking for, for a private business, at least the spaces that are being set aside.
Right.
So one of the things, I guess, this is making me think about, too, is, is, as you're looking at that language, I mean, I, I think the, you know, just the, the language of saying, well, we're going to give you the, a bigger discount, or whatever you want to call it, the 75% number, rather than the 50% number, that there may need to be a little bit of language in here that, that says that, where there is a pick of a parking lot, or publicly-owned parking lot, or whatever we end up on our language, there are public parking spaces that are sufficient. You know, I mean, if something, if something big enough were to come in here, I mean, whether it's 150, I mean, you know, let's just say, somebody says, well, I'm going to take this, this right-of-way abandonment, and we're going to call that a public parking spot. Well, now, so you got 750, you know, you got people who are doing 75% discounts all around there, when really, there was only 10 parking spots in this public parking spot. I would be a little careful. I'm, you know, I'm hesitant for the 750 feet, because nobody I know is going to walk I'm, you know, I'm hesitant for the seven hundred and fifty feet, because nobody I know is going to walk that far, typically speaking. But I, that, that, I can go along with that or whatever. I'm more hesitant on, you know, we're going to go doing all these discounts on the, on the, on the parking requirements before we really have our big-picture parking plan for downtown done. That's not a, you know, I know we've been working on it, but that's not done yet. You know, I, I, I'm a little more hesitant on all those kinds of things until we really know what we need. And, and I guess frankly, what I would say is, you know, we've got language somewhere in here that kind of says, you know, the, the planning director can have a little bit of input where, where it makes common sense to do that. We might also need to say it makes sense to not do it. You know, it makes sense to not give that where it doesn't make sense to give that. I.e., you're actually, you know, you're seven hundred and forty-nine feet away and all the properties in between you and the hundred and fifty spaces we just developed have taken advantage of it and, you know, we're already out of parking. You know, we need to be able to say, well, you know, it's not there. Now, maybe that's where a private company comes in and builds one. But I guess I would just say, maybe we need to add some language for that, too.
I was going back to the seven hundred and fifty foot, too. I mean, wouldn't it be better to have like five hundred foot? I mean, seven hundred and fifty foot is a long way just to go park your car to walk back over this way. To me, that's a pretty long distance.
It's kind of funny, it's kind of one of those things probably, that whatever number you put in, you, you, you're going to make them walk seven hundred and fifty feet. Because there will be no parking unless you drive over there.
And I think, I think whatever number, you know, five hundred is what we have in there right now. I think whatever number we put in there is, is fairly arbitrary. So it's the seven fifty, yeah, we, we wanted to build in a little bit more flexibility, a little bit more. You know, because we, we have run into a few instances downtown where there have been some properties that have been difficult to redevelop because of the parking regulations that we have right now. And it's, it's really, it's, it's hampered some, some redevelopments. You know, where we think that, that, that aside from the hurdles that were, that the administrative hurdles that we're putting in from our ordinances, that, that, that there is sufficient parking in the, in the area. And that's, and that's for those specific instances, not necessarily a blanket statement for the entire CCO. But the five hundred is the, is the somewhat arbitrary number that we have in there right now. And the seven hundred and fifty is the somewhat arbitrary number that we, that we're proposing. But we, you know, we, we, we tried to increase it, but not increase it too much to where we thought it was unreasonable. But we're certainly, we're certainly not, not married to the seven fifty.
And I was going to say, I'm looking at the language, and it's on page five, under four B. So the way that it's written now, it talks about the number of required onsite off-street parking spaces may, first caveat, be reduced by up to, so not actually at seventy-five, but up to, if the property is located within, right now it says seven hundred and fifty feet of a publicly-owned, that might be publicly-available, parking lot where parking is freely available to the users. So that's, you know, a lot of ifs and mays, and I'll call it attorney-legalese language. That has a lot of outs, I believe. But I think that it could be further refined to address the publicly-owned parking versus whatever the other things that we're looking at. But as Matthew did state, we, we actually have recently looked at, I think there's only six properties in the CCO area that are existing building on the entire lot. There's no way to provide existing parking. So we've had to look at our legal non-conforming use standards to see, okay, well, you can't do anything more than what you were doing previously. But then it started to ask the question, what is reasonable, what is available? And really, the main thing that we were looking at is, say you have a use that's only a Saturday-Sunday use versus something that's only breakfast. Can you have, or a residence versus a only-open restaurant? Can you have shared parking uses? But as you said, there is a parking study underway. But in the meantime, you know, we were looking at what might be reasonable and have a good dialogue. But we think that if we need to make some further tweaks, I, I think we can get us there.
I just, I just played this in my head real quick. And I'm not real sure this is going to make any sense, but I, I will just kind of put it this way. When I read that, you know, when you say "may be reduced", I mean, I think what you're kind of inferring is that you, that you say, well, you might be able to reduce up to seventy-five percent. I think if I'm getting ready to buy a piece of property downtown to put a commercial, you know, business there, I'm reading that as saying, "It may be reduced by seventy-five percent." There is no "might." It, it, it doesn't sound like "might" to me.
You're, you're reading it as, as can, can be reduced.
Yes, I mean, that's the way I read it. And it, and when, when you say the parking is freely available to the users, well, I don't read that as if there's sufficient parking. I read that as, can my users go over there and use it? Yeah, it's freely available to them to get there. So my point was, I, I don't think that language answers what I was trying to get at, which, and I don't, look, I'm just one person up here, but I'm just kind of saying, I'm just way less comfortable with the language as it is without having some outs to kind of say, you know, same kind of deal. Planning director has the authority to, to say you can't get that if we feel it's not sufficient. Something like that would be my only, I mean, not, it's not legalese, but that's just something as, as far as I would think of it, how, how we could make that better.
We can certainly continue to work on that.
If planning commission desires to go in that direction, we can add some legalese.
I think we should probably have our public hearing before we have any more questions. Because, you know, there may be some people out there that bring up some other things that you all want to discuss. So before we continue our discussion, we will open our public hearing and ask if there's anybody else out there tonight that would like to come up and have any comments regarding this proposed amendment to our zoning ordinance. Since we have a lot to talk about it, obviously. Nobody? Okay, just to confirm, we'll now close our public hearing so that we can continue our discussion.
You knew I was getting ready to make a motion, didn't you?
I knew you were, and I was going to save you from doing that, so. Check off my list, open, close, done. Now, further discussion, and then you may make a motion.
I don't want, y'all, I don't want to be, you know, the only one who has input on that. But I mean, what, I'm, I'd be okay, you know, I think the five hundred, seven fifty, I mean, that's, whatever. I mean, I, I think I prefer five hundred, but I'm not that tore about that. Me, my end, the language would be something that would change how I vote on this. But I want y'all to say, if y'all don't want to change anything about it, then somebody make a motion, we'll give it.
No, I'd, I'd like the language of giving the planning director the flexibility. Because I think we will, at some point, we're not there now, but at some point, you will be at a point where there's, the language says you might do it, but you just don't have the parking to do it.
And I, I agree with Rick. If somebody's looking at a downtown piece of property the way this is reading, it's not a, it's a possibility. It's, yeah, it's going to be done, because it may be done. That's, I think it needs to have something about sufficient parking in it.
I, I do have one other question, and it's pertaining to the open space. And I'm, I'm thinking from a developer's standpoint. If we allow them to use the rooftop decks as the formal open space and count towards the open space, what happens when a developer says, okay, I'm going to do that, but that's all I need, and I have more housing, you know, let's say I have ten units and I use all the rooftop decks as my open space, it hits the twenty percent limit, but I don't offer the other ten units anything? Do we have a way to address that?
Not as it's written today, because we do not require in townhouses that there's any private open space. It's, it's silent on private open space. But in looking at it, one of the things we had taken a look at is in our North Highlands plan, really it talks about expanding our city core, our CBD district, further north by several blocks. So the idea is if you're going to increase and want to make that a larger city center, both vertically and expanding out, that means that you're probably going to have less green space. The only thing that would allow, I'll say, any other space for persons is there's still the open space requirement. It's not necessarily formal open space, but it's open space nonetheless. So if you have fifteen percent of open space that you're providing, some of that might be backyard space for a resident. The only way that you could guarantee that, let's say, the people that don't have rooftop areas have any green space, as you would say, and I've seen codes say, must provide twenty-five square feet of private open space, meaning outside your unit, to every resident. We don't currently have that anywhere in our codes, but that would be the only way that you could mandate that those other ones get it. And then, of course, in your PRDs, you can say, hey, we really think that they should have some open space available to them, whether it's formal open space or regular open space, as you consider a project.
But today, the way it's written today, if you have open spaces available to everybody, correct?
Not necessarily. So there's open space as it's defined. It can include anything that's, I'll call it, green to the sky. And it can also include patios, whether they're covered or uncovered. That's what can be included in our open space, but it's not necessarily available to everybody. So some of the recent ones we've had, I'm thinking there was rooftops on the front and really like a patio on the back. Those little patios would be counted as open space, but they're not limited to everybody accessing it. That would be more of a private open space.
I, I agree, I have a, I have a problem with that. I really, I struggle with that on the, the, I can only think of one where we've, we've looked at that so far. But to say that, you know, if you had the four units that had rooftops and their rooftops that only those four units could use got to be counted in the open space requirement for the whole development, and the other eleven units had no open, wasn't, it wasn't no open space. But, you know, I, I just did not think it was fair that their rooftop private space could be counted towards open space for the whole development. So again, I don't.
And we could modify it, you know. Currently, it says, just in the proposal, that it could count towards all of your open space. So let's say I have less than eight units. It wouldn't be subject to, the way it's written today, not subject to formal open space. However, if we take out rooftops cannot be counted towards your regular open space, but could count only towards your formal open space, that could be a way to address it.
And it depends if the rooftop is a, where access is available to all residents within the development. Where I have seen that in other jurisdictions before, you know. So there is a rooftop, but every resident in the development can go up there and use it, not just the ones that it's directly above, so.
Open space is defined as all landscape areas or natural areas greater than two hundred square feet. So the rooftop patios would not be considered part of the, the non, the informal open space. The formal open space, we have added rooftop patios as, as a suggestion to include as formal open space. However, if you choose to, to eliminate that from the list of what can be considered as formal open space, that's, that's, that's an easy fix, we can, we can.
So I, I don't have a problem with it being part of the formal open space. I have a problem with it, with it being the only formal open space.
Right.
And it's private.
And private, yeah, if it wasn't private.
I think I prefer that it's, if everybody can use it, that I would be okay with it being part of it, is more.
Yeah, because that'd be a really nice amenity to have a whole rooftop you could go up and use.
This is going to be a real rookie planning commission question, but I'm going to ask it just so I can get it out here on the table. I mean, look, what, what's the purpose for having an open space requirement in a development? I mean, wh- why do we have a requirement for that? Big picture, just generally, is it?
The, the open space or the formal open space?
Yes.
Both, okay. Well, I mean, the, the open space is to make sure that we preserve a certain amount of, amount of green on the property, a certain amount of green open area, so that we're not, so that we're not.
Concrete.
Concreting the entire, the entire property. The formal open space is to add some quality of life to the development. It's, you know, I think that, that when we adopted the formal open space requirement, it was initially in the Gateway Design Overlay District Regulations. I think that, you know, in, in, in some instance, in some, with some uses, it makes more sense than others. But I think in the uses that it makes more sense, it adds to the quality of life for the people who either, either work at a commercial location where the formal open space makes sense, such as an office, an o- office development where there's a, a formal area for people to take their breaks and things, you know, I think about, you know, when you walk around the Gateway Island and you have all those offices that, that back up to the Gateway Island. And even though the ga- the, the, the trail and the amenities along the Gateway Island are, are not on those individual properties, they have their own formal open space. But you think about the quality of life that that adds to the people who work there to be able to have an amenity in their, in their backyard or behind the building. So in the same way, I think that, that adding amenities to developments, and I think most formal open spaces are amenities, add to the quality of life of the residents. It creates a sense of place for the residents, for the occupants. If it's a commercial facility, if you have formal open space and you're a customer of a, of a, of a business, I think it, I think nice places make you want to come back and then make you feel at home. And so I think that's really what we're trying to accomplish with the formal open space. And whether that's, whether that's, you know, you're, you're right, the rooftop patios are not available to all the residents. And I think that that's something that, that we can, that we can work to define, whether or not we, if you feel that the formal open spaces need to be open spaces that are available to the, to the entire community or to the entire, or to all the occupants of the, of the property, we can, we can look at that, we can take that off if you feel strongly about that.
Sorry, one more rookie question, just to make sure I'm square on this. So, so my, I, I have an easy layup on this, on the open space. I mean, there's, I, I would not think it would be appropriate for any rooftop stuff to be counted as open space. Because you're still going to be staring at concrete unless you're in a helicopter, right? And so open space would be off the table for me as far as rooftops. That's just my personal on it. Now, how, how we define that for formal, what is our normal, our typical in the CCO area? What's our typical formal open space and what's our typical open space requirement?
So our, right now, right, right now in the CCO, our open space and formal open space requirements default back to what's in our design guidelines. The, the entire section that we're adding, or the, the entire section in the ordinance amendment that's before you is being added. Because what we found, as Ms. Smith mentioned, is that the open space requirements in the design guidelines are not tailor-made for the urban-type development that we get in the city core overlay district. And what we find out is where, in the, in the urban areas where people are wanting to make it a little bit more dense, our more suburban open space requirements in the design guidelines really don't, really don't fit very well. And so we're trying to create a little bit more flexibility. So what is in the design guidelines, which is what we apply citywide, is what applies to the city core overlay district now. And Mr. LeLance, I will need, I, as you can see, I've avoided your question because I need to look that up and get you an answer.
And, and look, I feel like, Ruth, for having to ask it, I mean, but I, I.
I can see none of the rest of us know the answer either.
Yes, I mean, you know, that's, it's, I mean, I think that's a factor, right? So, I mean, for, for me, maybe, you know, we've outlined maybe three or four things that I think we might want to look at as far as some, some alternatives to, before we, maybe before we vote on this.
Yeah, I, I think we can, we can certainly, if there are things that you think that we can work on between now and council, we're happy to do that. I think that we can certainly do that. Or if you'd like to defer it, we can certainly bring it up at another meeting after working on it.
Or we can let Mr. McKnight tell us some things that you might.
Madam Chair, Planning Commission, and it's probably could be scheduled for a workshop as well. We could go back and work on those three items that we are currently discussing and then discuss those during a workshop before we move forward.
Love it.
Can I ask a rookie question also?
Yes, you can.
Can, what if we put a requirement that unless every unit had a rooftop patio, they can't count as formal open space? But if every unit does, then it can count. That way, every single unit in this development has a.
That way, every single unit in this development has a right to that private formal open space, but if they don't, they don't count.
Yeah, for formal, I would say I agree.
Or they put it on every unit.
Yeah.
If they, if they put it on every unit, or if they have a public open space for the development.
So, I think we have lots of options.
And I think you're right.
Discuss.
A discussion would be better.
Yeah, 'cause I think it's a great, it's, it's a great discussion, and, and what we've seen in the CCO, there are some opportunities that we're trying to be more flexible for the developers and the landowners, so this is great, great discussion, but I think, uh, um, more time to do that would be beneficial.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to defer to the workshop.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Appreciate it. Appreciate y'all's work on that, and, uh, a little bit more to come, so we'll look forward to that. Next, we have staff reports and other business, and we do have some items listed under here tonight, and you see two, and we are gonna have three that I've heard. So, our first item tonight is a mandatory referral to consider acquiring easements and right-of-way for the Bradyville Pike Reconstruction Department, and the city legal department is the applicant, Mr. Ives.
Glad to be here for everyone's favorite part of this meeting, mandatory referrals about easements. Uh, this one, actually, I didn't notice it till I got here tonight. It should be to consider granting easements and right-of-way. Uh, in this part, uh, and I don't have control of the screen, I don't, do you have Matthew or?
I can, I can bring it up.
If you can bring up Exhibit A to this item, please. The city owns a, it's outlined in black, it's at the far northwest, uh, uh, corner of the property. The city owns a substantial amount of open space there that is also pond overflow from the Chelsea Park Apartments. Uh, a, and now if you could skip to C, uh, when we complete Bradyville, that skew intersection that shows there is, uh, hashed at the upper left-hand side will go away, and there will be a sharper curve, then it will tee into, uh, uh, Bellwood, uh, Drive Boulevard, Bellwood Street there. So, in order to make that curve and then the change of elevation there, we've got a, uh, we're donating some right-of-way to this, as, to, the city will donate right-of-way to TDOT, since this is a state project, and will donate a substantial slope easement to support the road there. So, we're asking that, uh, a recommendation to approve the donation of this right-of-way and easement to support the Bradyville Road Project.
Okay. Any questions?
Questions?
There are none, I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
You missed the best part.
Oh, but we have one more. Second item is a mandatory referral to consider granting easements to MTEMC across the Doug Young Public Safety Training Center and Old Fort Park Properties. City legal department applicant, Ms. Ives.
Uh, part of the reconstruction and widening of, uh, what's known as, uh, Phase One of the State Route 99 project, which is actually the last phase to be undertaken, uh, but it's from, uh, 96 over to Middle Tennessee Boulevard. Uh, this involves also relocation of some utilities. Uh, Middle Tennessee Electric needs to move their line that runs, uh, parallel to, runs along the Doug Young Training Center. They need to move that line about five feet closer to, uh, our property, uh, which gets five feet closer to our fence, which gets, means we have to, need to give them an easement to move that line in. Uh, we're working both with, of course, with MED, I mean, Middle Tennessee Electric on, uh, moving the, reloading their lines, and they and others are working with us to move water and sewer lines, uh, to get ready for that project, which will, I don't have a construction time yet, but it's, it's, uh, I do believe we're getting close to a contract letting on that, so they need that easement. Uh, and the second easement, I guess these should be separate motions, so we just, if you could, we'd recommend that we grant, uh, that the city grant the, them an easement across the Doug Young Training Center property.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And the next one is at the other end of, uh, uh, Bridge Avenue where it trend, where crosses 90, or, yeah, where, actually, the other end of 99, where it crosses 96, uh, they need an ac, a, a anchor easement, uh, in the Old Fort Golf property, uh, the Old Fort Park property just across, uh, Golf Lane there at the, near the entrance of the park. There's a, there's a pole going in there that'll be in right-of-way, uh, but with the pole designed, they need an anchor easement, uh, into that, in, in that park property, which we recommend you, uh, you recommend.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
If, if you would take one and hand these on.
Okay, I think we have one more item being added on, Mr. Ives.
I do have one more that's not on the agenda, and it's another Middle Tennessee Electric easement. As a part of reworking, uh, some of their pole line along State Route 96, uh, out west of town, they need an anchor easement, uh, on property that the city owns, which at some point, we expect to be developed into a city park, uh, out there on 96. This is across from the Burgess property. Uh, with redoing some pole lines, they need an anchor easement, uh, a, a few feet into our park property. Uh, Park and Rec has looked at this, and nobody expects that this is gonna cause any great, uh, any problem at all with our, our park design. It's right, uh, very close to the right-of-way, so we would request your recommendation on this also.
Questions?
There are none, I'll make a motion we approve.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Nothing else from me.
Okay. Uh, any, okay. Did just wanna say one more thing to Ms. Garland, uh, since, again, we're going to miss you. Know you're moving up the corporate ladder, got lots of new responsibilities, requirements of more travel, and all of those things that are gonna take you away from us, but we certainly want to congratulate you on all of those, uh, wonderful career moves going on in your life. And again, we will miss you very much and wish you the best.
Thank you. I have a speech prepared for you all now, so.
Oh, yeah.
Madam, madam chair.
I would've been really surprised.
Madam, madam chair, on behalf of staff, we would like to echo those comments. Ms. Garland has been a pleasure to work with, and we feel that she has been a, a great asset to the planning commission, to the city.
Absolutely.
I have enjoyed all of my Wednesdays with all of you all.
Well, thank you.
It's been a pleasure and an experience, and I'm grateful for it, and I wish you all the best. So, thank you very much, all of you.
Thank you. We appreciate your service. And we stand adjourned.